Okay.
Okay. Call for meeting to order. Call to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Trustee Tremblay.
Yeah.
Trustee Malinsky.
Yeah.
Trustee Connor.
Here.
Trustee Harazak.
Here.
Mayor McCutcheon.
Here.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of January ninth?
So moved.
And the second?
Second.
Any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. And may I have, I guess you guys have it, yep, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of February eighth? Go move.
Second.
Alright, any corrections? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Question, or presentation of petitions, communications, and general question period for members of the community. As we have no one here tonight, we will dispense with that. I'll wait till seven to call the public hearing to order. Report from the code enforcement officer. He did leave his report. So do you want to have any questions about that? Anything you want me to share with him when I see him later this week? Nope, everything good. Alright. My report is short and straight. Good evening and welcome to the February board meeting. Although we have been spared a harsh winter, recently we have had plenty of snow and messy weather. Once again, I know I say this every month, I remind you to not park on the streets between the hours of 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. Do not block the sidewalks with vehicles or trash cans or other items. Our DPW works very hard to clear the sidewalks and the roads, and these items impede that. I'm happy to report that the village of Champlain has again been awarded status as a Tree City USA. We will continue to work on planting more trees in the village and maintaining those we have. The annual Arbor Day celebration will be on April 29th, and details will be announced in a few weeks. I thank those village residents who suggest and help organize activities. A quick shout out to Julia Renda. She suggested that we have an ice sun catcher contest. Several fun and creative sun catchers were made and displayed at the Champlain Meeting House. There was a tie for first place with siblings Olivia and Austin Renda winning. We are always looking for enjoyable events to offer the community, so let us know if you have ideas. I'd also like to recognize the Champlain Fire District for their presentation last month, explaining all the factors that go into fire protection. We continue to work closely together and show mutual respect. There are plans to make river access easier for the fire trucks if needed. The hydrants that are not functioning at this time are going to be repaired under the upcoming waterline project. And fire calls in the village are now being shared with Mike Jalaker and myself through a new app that we have. So I thank them for this productive meeting. And I also would just like to publicly thank Juanita and Mary for their dedication to the recent work that they've had to do, in particular Juanita with the grants and the loans and these project things and working with EFC. It's, it's a difficult process. It's a learning process, huge learning curve. And somehow they've managed to get through it and still smile every day, so I sincerely thank you and all of the word thanks you because it's been absolutely huge. And rather stressful. That's probably not an understatement, is it? So, thanks for that. Report from the trustees. Joel?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, Chuck?
Well, we had scheduled a game day in January, and unfortunately, the weather didn't cooperate too well, plus we didn't have anybody to show up, so I'm not sure what we're gonna do. We're not gonna have another one in February, just maybe hold off to see how things go for a while.
Sure.
The shed or the children's garden was ordered and delivered and assembled. And I want to thank Juanita for ordering that for us. It's a decent size, and I think you'll get some good use out of that.
Thank you.
I don't believe there's anything right now.
Thank you. Nikki?
Okay. It's been a pretty slow winter for our kids' activities, but, you know, pretty busy elsewhere. I'd like to plan a kids' winter theme activities at the library on February 21st at 10:00. So that's Tuesday, which is next week. There is no school. So we'll throw some activities together, winter themed. I am planning a cooking class, if the meeting house is available, on March 4th at 11:00. And then a garden club activity on March 25th at 11:00.
March 4th and March 25th?
Yes.
I'll check those dates for you.
I'll check all the dates, and then I'll put up an event for those. If anyone is looking for anything to do, I know the North Country Skating Club has their show coming up, the second weekend of March, I believe. And the NCCS Drama Club at the end of March is performing The Wizard of Oz, so come out and support our local children. We're putting a lot of work into these shows and
Yeah, that's great.
There are a lot of kids in the play this year, so it's exciting.
That'll be fun.
Yeah. And that's all I have for now.
Okay, thank you. Kim?
I don't have anything this evening.
Oh, okay. May I have the report from the clerk treasurer?
Okay, everyone has their January expenses and revenue reports?
Yep.
It's pretty close. I don't think anything is really running behind. We do have two transfers, though, that we do have to make.
So you want to do those transfers first?
Yes. So we have transfer from A, or to A 7110.4 parks, $1,000, from A 9010.8 retirement, $1,000. That's cover the cost, the additional, the cost of the shed, and they bought, he made a base for it. To F 1420.1 law, $500, from F 90.10.8 retirement, $500. To G 8189.1, other sanitary personnel, $5,000. From G 8120.4 sanitary sewers contractual, $5,000. And to G 9730.7, bond anticipated no interest, $10,625.75. And from G 8130.2, $10,625.75. So the sewer bond. That's what we said, this has been very complicated with EFC, working with EFC. So we had spent so much money, and then when it came to us being transferred the money from EFC from our loan, we found out that the village needed to pay the difference between $398 and $480,000 because the band needed to be paid before we got any more money. And then we had to pay the interest on top of that, which was $10,625. But in the meantime, we did get reimbursed for what we paid to close the loan out. So, which is good.
So is there a motion for these transfers?
So moved. Second.
Any, any questions for Juanita? Roll call.
Trustee Tremblay.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Harazak.
Aye.
Mayor McCutcheon.
Aye.
And then the two projects?
Let's, let's do the warrant first.
Okay.
Do you want to do the warrant first?
Yeah, that's fine. I was just reading for it.
Because that's where the transfers go to.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so we have a warrant, additional invoices of $800.18 for a total warrant of $39,086.61.
We have a motion to pay the warrant with the additional invoices. And a second?
Second.
Okay, how about some questions here? Any expenses that you're not sure about, or you're just wondering about?
No.
No? Wex Bank, is that?
That's our, that's our gas and diesel.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Tremblay.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky. Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Harazak.
Aye.
Mayor McCutcheon.
Aye.
Okay, so now that we have our wastewater treatment plant loan together, we have two invoices that we've been waiting for, that they just sent us, for December. Goes from October 27th, one for parrises excavating, $233,836.80, and one for pipeline, $8,091.39, for a total of $241,928.19. That's to come out of the wastewater treatment plant loan.
May I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Questions on these?
So is Paris done with excavating, or will they be back?
No, they'll be back.
Okay. They will be back.
Yeah.
So this is just paid to date?
Correct.
Yeah.
These are my last two that I just received.
And we actually had to hold, we had to hold quite a while on this until we
No, these, these, these I just got. It's the other bills.
Oh, the Paris one, I thought this one before.
No, no, well, I just got these two, but the other ones were from before that we were waiting on.
Okay.
That we couldn't pay because we hadn't the money.
Yeah. Roll call.
Trustee Tremblay.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Harazak.
Aye.
Mayor McCutcheon.
Aye.
And then the other two invoices, one's from December and one's from January, for the main waterline replacement project, both Barton and La Juvis, for $29,592.
We have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on this one? Roll call.
Trustee Tremblay.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Harazak.
Sir.
Mayor McCutcheon.
Aye.
Second, sorry.
That's the same thing. Okay, any, any, any other questions for Juanita, financial wise? Once again, just thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Report from the superintendent. So Mike left his report for you. Don't know if you've had a chance to glance at it since you just got it. They've been busy as usual. Just give you a second to look it over if you haven't.
What is that? Is that great?
AFC building?
Yes, yes, AFC.
Yeah.
Any questions?
I don't have a question on his report. I know they're very busy, and they've, they've done a great job with the roads and everything this winter. Are we gonna be able to get some paving done this summer?
We've been talking about it.
Yeah, we're planning, and we've got, we've got the CHIPS money. We talked about the roads, and I guess he's on a 10-year cycle, so he was talking about the roads that need to be done, and then we start over the cycle again, so yes, he was talking about your butternut
Yeah, well, where they replaced a water line in the project, I mean, that's, that's like this now? But also Maiden Lane?
Yes, Maiden Lane's definite, yeah, we talked about that.
Yeah, that's, that's on the list.
Oh, good. Thank God, that's that's horrible. And I'm down that road.
You say Elm?
Yeah, Elm was one of them.
And Church Street, yeah.
There was a total, I think, six?
Six or seven, it might have been seven, I mean, Maiden Lane.
Maybe so, maybe so. Maybe. Yeah, we, we talked about that last week.
Elm, Maiden, Walnut.
Church.
Church.
Wait until you count Maiden.
Maple? Butternut?
Butternut, Maple. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's it.
That's about it.
So any idea when he'd be able to get on to the, like, the county waiting list?
Well, I mean
He's going to a meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, he's going to a meeting tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah, getting, I mean, we're, we're on the list, the problem seems to be when they actually show up.
Well, it seems like we're always at the end of the
We're at the end, yeah.
End, and then the last year, they just run out.
Everybody run out.
Yeah.
Last year.
Yeah, it's a question to have Mike explain, I mean, I, I don't, I don't want to second guess things or say something that's not accurate, but yeah, we're definitely going to get some paving done.
Okay.
We really need it.
Because I know our, our CHIPS money is building up, and is that, is that money that
It's rolled over.
Right, I didn't realize that, but is there a time limit on, oh geez, you've got $150,000 rolled over and you haven't done anything with it?
I'm not gonna give you as much, yeah.
No, no.
Yeah, no, that's
No.
We, we think, when, when I do, when, once we get all our bills together, I kind of don't want to deplete it, so I kind of use what money we have in the budget and then mix it with CHIPS funds, so we're not totally wiping it out.
Yeah, I was just wondering if after a certain period of time
No.
That the money
I've never
run away. Of course, we haven't paved in, what, three years?
No.
Three years, two years?
No, last year was
Yeah, last year was the only year before that we did.
We did before that.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I know, I remember South Street being done, I think
Willa?
Yeah, and Cherry, I think, was done.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, so Mike has a couple of invoices here that he's looking to purchase. There's a, there's a live edge plow blade for the Peterbilt, which he's also going to apply for grant funding through Clinton County Soil and Water, which would be $1,500 towards this.
That's a new type of blade.
It's a new type of blade, right. Yeah, gotta get the right one.
There you go.
This one's it? Yes. Yep. So he would be, he would be looking for approval of $3,120, and then would be applying for that grant. And I believe it says that people who have not gotten the grant before are getting first first priority, are getting, being given priority. Towns that have not received the grant funds previously will be given priority. Can I get a motion so we can discuss this?
I'll make a motion that we allocate $31,120 for a new blade for the Peterbilt.
Yep. Is there a second?
Second.
So these, these live edge plow blades sound pretty cool. I know Joel talked to him tonight about this a little bit, right? Yeah, so it, it, I guess it come, I'm no expert on plow blades, but it comes in sections, I believe, so you can, if, if you can remove one, you can remove one section, but it scrapes the road much better because it can operate a little bit independently, so if you've got a dip or something in one section, it can go hit that better. Any questions on that? Roll call.
Trustee Tremblay.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Harazak.
Aye.
Mayor McCutcheon.
Aye. And then there's also a need for a carbide edging, cutting edge for the V plow at $1,829.
Motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
And I think he included some pictures from that. So this is a, I guess, a saber beat blade kit.
He said the attachments, the one that we have now, it's lasted three years. Says without the attachments, you likely have to replace them a couple times in one season, so for $280 would be worth it.
Yeah.
And he's, he's, he's going to the meeting tomorrow, and the guy who has it
Oh, yes.
He's going to bring the blade to him, so then we don't have to pay for it to be shipped in the hall, so saves a couple hundred bucks.
Yes, that's right.
Saves $300.
Yeah, thanks for sharing that, I forgot about that, yeah. Alright, roll call.
Trustee Tremblay.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Harazak.
Aye.
Mayor McCutcheon.
Aye. Oh, and then as far as the pickup goes, you know, we talked about the one that was at Riley Ford, that one's already been sold. So he's searching high and low for a truck, and the person that he's working with at Riley is also helping to look, so see what we can find, but that gives you the approximate cost, I mean, I think we're probably talking about $60,000. So it's something we'll have to talk about, but right now we're just looking for one, and they're very hard to find.
Did we get copied on specs for, for truck?
Well, this is just all I got, it's not very, not very informative.
Is he working with other, other dealerships besides Riley?
Yeah, he's been calling all over, hasn't found anything. He mentioned something, he even called someplace in Connecticut, but once he thought the price that they had posted, they said, oh, that does, that includes something else, and it was like an additional $11,000.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's going to be hard to find one. Yeah.
He wants to find Ford.
Well
Actually, well, he, from what I, I could be completely wrong with this, but from what it sounded like he had explained to me was that there's a program for the state where if you were to get not surplus, I can't remember what the name
It's fleet, it's fleet.
Fleet.
Yeah.
Then those are four vehicles.
Well, that's the one that he applied for, he said, but he said you can do that with any other manufacturer.
Okay.
But that's the one that he said that they, they applied for, or whatever. It was like, was it $11,000 reduction or something like that?
I think it was eight.
Eight.
Maybe it was eight, okay. But that was for a 22.
Correct.
And 22s are just about nonexistent, so he may have to start all early in for 23s.
Yeah, well, I think he is opening the door to that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And he was looking for a one-ton, which is
He said poss, yeah, possibly instead of a three-quarter ton, you have to go to a one-ton while we're waiting, but anyway.
Yeah.
Hopefully John can find something.
But it's just gonna be hard, I mean, there aren't vehicles out there anymore. Everyone ends up ordering them.
Well, they're into 23
Correct, yeah.
Well, even that, I mean, even if one of us wants to go buy a new vehicle, it's, it's very, I mean, we all know
I'm just saying that the 22s, they're, they're not making them, so they're not making 23s, so that's the, that's the issue. And you probably have to order a 23 as compared to something on the lot.
And that may be what we end up having to do, we'll see. Correspondence, I think the only thing was the, the CHIPS announcement.
Yeah, yeah, the CHIPS, the funding, the DOT
It didn't get listed on the agenda by, I think you
The DOT letter regarding the CHIPS funding.
I think you got it, yeah.
We got that.
Yeah.
You got that out of my local, right?
Yeah, right, right.
Well, they keep sending it to us every
I was gonna say, I didn't have it here, but I remembered seeing it, I thought, last month.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, it came in on
The day.
It was received here on the 17th, so it was after our meeting, after our January meeting.
Anyway.
Anyway, so that is, just note that that did come in. Under new business, first we have the easement for the property downtown, exiting on, I don't know what you call that, Maiden Lane or Church Street there, but did everyone have a chance to read that? I just need, I mean, if you have any questions, we can answer them, but otherwise I just need approval to sign it.
Motion.
Would you second that? Does anyone have any concerns or, or questions? This comes from the village lawyer.
And this was the piece of property that we had talked about many, many times.
Yeah, this is a little portion of the FEMA land, and we can't sell it, so we're willing to give an easement. And it's running on a year-to-year basis, just in case it doesn't work out.
Yep.
Right.
And thank you, Mary, for working on that, I know we, we talked about it a little bit.
Yeah, Mary, and I spoke with Tom the other day and worked out a few little things.
I just have, I just see, it says 35 feet wide from there?
It was 39.
I thought it was 38.
This says 35.
Wasn't it supposed to be 38?
Well, I wonder if he talked to that person and changed it maybe. I don't know why he would have changed it. So maybe I should call the lawyer tomorrow and ask.
I'm just still checking.
Yeah.
It was wider than that, I thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was two.
Was it 38 or 39?
It was 39, 39, I thought.
Well, let me check and see if that was changed for a reason, or if that was just mistyped. Anything else? No? Okay, we have a motion on the floor, of all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. For the comprehensive plan, I mean, most of us were at the meeting, I thought the meeting was, I thought the meeting went well, I thought it was very informative, the woman from the Department of State. We do have to talk about our part of the committee that's going to represent the village. We don't want to do that now, but that is something we need to think about. I don't know, do you have any comments about that, maybe, those of you in there?
No, I think they kept it pretty well on task and moving, moving along, because you do tend to lose people after a while when you're talking about that stuff. Again, all of us, I think, were taken aback when we were like, yeah, it's gonna be like three months, and I don't think anyone was expecting that.
Yeah, I mean, it just seems like every grant comes with this
Lengthy.
lengthy time period before it's actually allocated. So I guess it's not too much of a, actually, three months is probably pretty quick when you're talking about this date.
Three months, yeah.
Not wrong.
Yeah.
Get to six months, and yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And then the other little surprise, I think, for both the supervisor and myself, is that And then the other little surprise, I think, for both the supervisor and myself is that, um, we didn't realize there was that ten percent match. And some of that was in kind, so we'll have to see how that works out, but it's about five thousand total.
Yeah, five thousand, is it?
One-twenty.
One-hundred and twenty, but can't we, we can use like the cost of the lawyer, that can be used as part of some of that, right?
Yes. Right, right.
So it'd be stuff that we would have to pay for anyway, but that can be contributed, used as our contribution.
Yeah. Right. Okay, so I think that's great. That's moving along nicely. It's exciting to get a comprehensive plan. Uh, budget workshop, we need to schedule one. I'm, I'm suggesting Monday, the twenty-seventh, which is two weeks from tonight. We normally meet earlier on these workshops, so I don't know if five or five-thirty works, or if that date even works. I don't know what time you get home, Kim.
Five works for me.
Five does work.
When it comes to this, I, earlier in and out.
Yeah.
Does five work for the rest of you?
Just checking.
Okay. Great, okay.
Did you send the twenty?
Seventh. Monday, the twenty-seventh.
I'm good.
Great, okay. Monday, the twenty-seventh at five P M. We did include, um, the updated, what we've done so far with the budget. And also, I believe you have some things that Mike wrote about, right?
Yes.
Twenty-twenty-three budget and also, um, the water fund and the sewer fund. Thanks to Mary, who came up with this handy-dandy explanation of, um, projected maybe increases and how it would affect the users. So just to make our meeting on the twenty-seventh easier, just make sure that you've really looked over those and you've come up with any concerns or suggestions. Only his seven. Yeah. So, yeah, just make sure that you've looked over those, so we can, we can go over those together. All right, so I need a motion to, uh, close the regular session, so. In a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. And a motion to open the public hearing.
No.
In a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. All right, so we are now in the public hearing for the override, which I gotta find that sheet. Oh, you, you should have it in mind too, but I, but I, that's what happens when I move my papers around. All right, so this is a public hearing for a local law authorizing a property tax levy in excess of the limit established in general municipal law, uh, three dash C. As we have no members of the public to comment on this, I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Um, I now need a motion to, um,
In regular?
Oh, I gotta go into regular session. We're not in regular session. May I have a motion to open the regular session? In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. We're back in regular session. So now I need a motion to accept this local law. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, a roll call.
Trusty Tremblay.
Aye.
Trusty Malinsky.
Aye.
Trusty Connor.
Aye.
Trusty Herzak.
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye. All right. Thank you. Juanita, do you, do you wanna make that, that explanation for the board and, and the public about this, about this tax override?
Okay. So. Yes, yes. Okay, so you can only override your tax cap by two percent, which means two percent of what your tax cap was last year. So therefore, this year, our assessments have increased and we have twenty-eight thousand dollars more in revenue. But because we can only override last year's tax cap, which is two percent, we could only increase by eight thousand dollars. So therefore, when I did the constitutional tax cap limit form, it shows us being twenty thousand dollars over the tax cap. So I guess, basically, if your assessments go up, you have more income, you're penalized. I don't know how that, but, yeah. But you can only increase your taxes by two percent of last year's. So last year's income was two hundred and forty-eight thousand, this year's income is two hundred and seventy-one thousand. Because of the increase in assessments. At the same rate.
Right. So really, there's no way we can do it. I mean, there's no way we can, we have to have this override.
Right.
I mean, why would you not have the extra income and
Yeah.
You know, like this year, it's because there was such an increase in assessments, there hadn't been for years and, you know, next year it might not go up. Yeah, yeah, we, we don't know that, we can't predict that.
Yeah, right.
But anyway, that's the reason, the, the main reason.
All right, thanks for explaining that. We are back to the new business. Um, item number four is the one hundred and fiftieth celebration that I asked you last month to think of some ideas. I don't know if anyone's come up with any ideas of what you'd like to do, to offer.
I, I had some ideas or an idea and, uh, I'm not sure exactly how, how it would take place. It, uh, have something, and I discussed it with Janet about, uh, it'd be probably in the the playground area. Have like a community, not only a farmer's market, but a crafter's market and, and organizations that wanna participate where they can kind of present themselves to the community, where they'd have booths, several booths and, and I was considering maybe, and then we couldn't do this as a village, but as a playground fund, that we have a separate account, Janet said for. Or have like some type of, uh, maybe a Chinese auction where we could raise money to go towards the pickleball courts that people are considering. So it'd be, you know, kind of inclusive in that area and maybe some of the organizations would be interested in doing something. Maybe we could have food trucks there and, and maybe I know we was discussing, uh, one of my meetings, maybe have something like a barbecue or something like that. And, and sell that as a fundraiser. But, uh, you know, it's, it's just an idea and require a lot of work.
Yes.
Yeah, cause I think.
Not just by the board, but by the community. And another thing, maybe we can have the, a museum opened up that day, you know, people go into there as as a, as a community where all the businesses and, and organizations could just present themselves and show what, what they're all about and what they do to help the community.
Do we have a date set for this?
No.
No, I don't think so.
Well, we kind of do. Um, it's, it's, I don't have my calendar up, but it's, um, it would be around the twenty-third or that part of September is the, the, the birthday.
Okay.
Yeah.
Twenty-third is Saturday.
You know, what, what's the, my glasses, are you there? You tell me, Nick.
The twenty-third is on a Saturday.
Oh, okay, so I guess I, I'm, I'm.
September twenty-third.
September twenty-third is what I, I was thinking it would be, but I mean, it doesn't have to be, it could be the week before. I wouldn't go too much later just because of the weather. And we don't have to decide that right now, but I'll throw that date out.
So that is the real date?
Um, I'd have to get up and look at something, but it's, it's in the twenties of September.
I'd have to talk to Tom on our food drivers, especially the last weekend in September.
I can usually probably tell you when it is.
We probably should set that date at the next meeting though, so we can really get going on it. Joel, do you think the cornhole?
That's what I was just thinking.
Would that be a good time to do that?
Yeah, I think it would be a perfect time to do it. You could, I mean, you could do like a bonfire. I don't know where you're thinking about doing it. I don't know, again. I was thinking if I, what do we do, Village Fest? I mean, you could probably do something there.
But the cornhole could be down there.
Definitely, yeah.
And you could have like a bouncy house.
I mean, you could just do like, almost like stations, like if you have all kinds of different stuff.
Yeah.
You may wanna close off, kind, I guess you can't like close off the street, but maybe part of the street.
Well, Maiden Lane doesn't have too much traffic, but River Street, uh, I mean, we have activities down there and we handle the traffic, okay? But the cornhole might be really fun.
Oh, yeah.
For the tournament, like you were talking about before.
Yeah, that's a perfect day for it. That's what I was, I mean, when you were talking about that, so I was thinking in my head.
That would be fun.
Yeah, you could do, I mean, you could have it go all day. You could have it, I mean, depends on what time would we wanna have everything happen. Cause I mean, like, Justin, you could do barbecue, I mean, you could have everything going on at once. I feel like, I don't know, more than Mary or, but I guess you could have quite a few different things going on.
Yeah.
Trying to think of other things. You could do like an arts and crafts, or there's gotta be some sort of, where, where is the museum?
That's the history museum on the corner by the bridge.
Museum, okay. Okay.
Um, the Samuel de Champlain History Center. I would guess the law of it might be done between like, I don't know, one and four maybe, probably. We might have the volleyball net set up too. You know, we've got that, and I talked to Mike about getting that, getting that set up. And then our two new pieces, the playground pieces will be installed this summer too, so that will be cool. So we could have volleyball too. But the cornhole sounds like a lot of fun and there was interest in that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm trying to think, uh, like now I'm just thinking of the ways to get people to get the word out.
Yeah.
I'm sure if you called the Press Republican, they would do a weekend paper on that, you know, without a question. I'm sure you could probably, we could probably dig up some stuff, like, you know, for an edit, or not an editorial, but for a page if they were looking for something to, to write up. I mean, there's no way that it wouldn't be able to make the front page, weekend paper for that.
I'm sure The Sun would do something. On the press.
Facebook, and then Facebook, Facebook is.
There's radio stations that put out.
Yeah, I'd like to invite the radio station, like W O K O.
I was just gonna say, W O K O has their, um, you know, kinda what's going, if you're looking for something to do this weekend.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But what about having them come on site? How do you do that? They go to places, they go to events.
They've come into basketball games.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they've been sitting up at the bas- at the high school for basketball games too.
How do you?
World.
I don't know who set it up or how it happened, but yeah.
I guess I can just call them.
How many times they've come up.
That'd be fun to have them broadcast from there for an hour or two.
That'd be nice.
Whatever it may be.
Yeah, and have, you know, have music, I mean.
Yeah.
We could do that.
Okay. I don't know, I'm excited. I think it sounds like fun. Okay, so we'll, uh, we'll start pulling some things together and, uh, we'll get some input from the community also. That'd be great. I don't have anything else under new business. Does anyone have any old business or new business?
Well, I have something that we got an email on and I just haven't seen or heard anything else on it. Was this the New York Housing Compact?
I'm not sure that that was signed or was put in, that was the idea of a proposal and I never heard the follow-up whether or not it was included.
So I was curious if there was anything additional.
I haven't heard anything additional. I have serious concerns about it if it's going to be put into action, but so for, for those of you who maybe didn't see it, it's a, it was going to be, or maybe is, a proposal from Governor Hochul saying that in order to increase the housing market, um, that there was going to be a certain percentage, um, what was it, one percent? One percent for populations, certain, or villages, of an increase over a three-year period of housing. Which I figured out it came to five houses over three years, so I'm thinking, I'm kinda panicking because five houses in the village, that's pretty hard because we don't really have much land.
No, you'd have to get rid of things.
We do have some vacant, we have some vacant buildings however.
It's one percent.
Yeah, one percent.
For no homes target.
So it was five, it turned out to be five, but I haven't heard if that was, um, if anything else happened with it. That's very, very difficult. I think there was a waiver too. There was like a, 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 a one-time waiver.
A one-time waiver.
Right, but then.
How long is that waiver for?
Right, probably a three-year period.
Right, and then you'd have to do it the following.
And there's no like, size-wise of the area?
I don't know if the details are even thrown out.
Tiny houses.
Right, I mean.
Yeah, we're going to have a, I won't even say, I thought it would spread a rumor that we're really going to do this.
Tiny house community.
I didn't see anything on that either, Chuck.
There's, you know, very limited.
I, Nikon has not reached out to us again.
No.
About that, so I, I don't know. It would be very difficult for the village of Champlain to, to find investors to build five new houses here.
Right.
I mean, I, I, I love it.
It's hard.
But that would be hard here. We don't even have much vacant land. Where they.
There is, there's, there's land.
That investors are, you know.
Well, I'm not saying.
They would have to take down the old houses that burnt in the village and buy new investors and build new ones.
There's land over there, maybe, there's a lot of it.
Yeah, I know, it was originally designed as a subdivision over there.
There's some up I need to.
Yeah.
But like you say, you need to have investors.
But that can't be used, because.
It's not anymore?
It's agriculture.
No, I think it's all, uh.
One side.
Even the one side?
One side, I think.
With that one house, it's.
Oh, one side.
The other side can be.
Yeah.
Yeah, they can still build on that one side, I believe.
They still.
Yeah.
They thought it was just that one side of the road still.
Okay.
Yeah, and then there are certainly, uh.
Did we talk about this? That's on fire.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'll let you do that, Kim, you've got it right there. This is the logo.
This is the new logo that will be used on the website that the town has been working on. Um, they the company came back, where inventor came back with several different designs, and this was the one that seemed, I think, to encompass it the best. I, I saw all of them and I didn't really care.
I saw option three, so I was wondering what the others look like.
They just, um, I don't have copies of the other ones. You know, sometimes you get a little inside info depending on who you're talking to. And, um, in my opinion, this was, this was the nicest one. It, um, the star represents north, southeast and west, of which we have access to everything. So they tried to really incorporate that. Um, I liked, uh, Champlain, the town with its two villages. With two villages, I'm sorry. Um, but I think that that's the one that they are gonna go with.
I really like it.
But, but I think also, um, I know the supervisor had asked me if we had talked about it, I'm gonna say in our last meeting, and.
We didn't have it.
No, we didn't have it. I got it after our last meeting.
Was it after that? Okay, so maybe he thought we had it and.
Yeah, I think he did, and I said, no, I haven't even seen it, and then he said, oh, I forgot to send it.
Okay, there you go.
Yeah, so anyway. Yeah, so there, there it is, and I think it's very well done.
I, I think it's, I'll be really excited when they've got that new website.
Yeah.
Up and running and, you know, you click here, it's gonna take you to the village, you click here, it's gonna take you to the town. Click here, it's gonna take you to Russell's point, so it's pretty exciting.
Yeah, yeah, very, very well done. Anything else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn then, so. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, he was sending me an answer, he said, can you tell me, um, if it got approved, he said, so I can text him. Who knows that?